...that we have. Is there a representative of Unit 1 that is here to provide that? Please, good to see you. Please come forward and you'll have up to 10 minutes. Divide it up as any way you'd like for the official representative of Unit 1. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council members. My name is Jennifer Wozniak. I work for the Laborers International Union of North America, Local 777. I believe I have 10 minutes. I think I have four minutes prepared, so it'll be pretty brief. I represent the people that work in the city streets. They repair the potholes. They repair the streets so that our public safety vehicles can drive to get to where they need to go. I represent the garbage truck drivers and public works who also use those same city streets and they pick up the recycling, green organics, garbage from all city households throughout the city of Phoenix. And the parks employees who maintain our parks and clean our parks and are dedicated employees. We have a few things that we want to talk about today, and again, I am extremely brief. One, since 2008, every single person that we represent has taken home the same amount of money, if not less. Less because they're taking pay cuts from their 2008 salary. Launa represents city workers in Chicago, Los Angeles, San Francisco. I'm at two of those tables. Each of those cities has seen restoration of concessions and modest CPI and COLA increases in that time. It will be 10 years, one decade at the end of this contract. We are asking to have all concessions, all pay cuts, for the people I represent that make $13.68 since an hour at the bottom level, just as a reminder. They're still taking pay cuts off of that base salary. We're asking for those cuts to stop, to cease, to restore the concessions that they have now lasted eight years and not continue another two years into a decade. We understand the financial challenges as a city. We have worked with the city time and time again. We have been there and stepped up and said, "Do you need our help? Do you need our help?" Since 2008, it's 2015 today. We've helped. We've been there. We've taken the cuts, but we've worked with less people. We've worked hard. We have never decreased what the work that we have put out to the community. The citizens and the residents of this city have seen the same exact services they saw in 2008. And we didn't complain. We didn't gripe. We haven't been there to do that. So we're asking for the concessions to be restored. But we aren't just asking for that, and that's why I brought my handy notes, so that I have a little cheat sheet here. We're asking to have the city allow more flexibility in hiring practices, improve scheduling for a better sense of when they serve the public, so that maybe that when the folks are repairing the potholes, it's not at 4:00 in the morning, but it's during the middle of the day. We're also asking for a new section on public outreach and safety, training, bloodborne pathogens, threat identifications, which are extremely important right now, appropriate techniques to de-escalate confrontations in the field, everyone I represent is in the field, and proper handling of biohazards. And then we didn't stop there, because I always like to bring something new forward to all of you, which I have not spoken about. Two programs for apprentices, an apprentice gardener position, so those folks would be in a program for two years that would work at the university level for classwork and horticultural programs and field for IDA plants, succulents, the trees. There are many, many trees. I cannot remember the exact number, but I know that Parks has gone over that with me. There are thousands of trees within this city. We're also asking for a commercial driver's license program. Do you want to stop? Okay. So that we can train garbage truck drivers, those in our streets, they'll be certified for one year. Again, a program that deals with both classroom setting and also field work, so that we have the best trained people in the field serving the community and the citizens of this city. Those are things that are new ideas that we're bringing forward that we have not brought forward before, but we think they're an advantage. They continue to place Phoenix above other cities in the Pacific Southwest and throughout the country, quite frankly. And at that, I conclude, and I will lend my time.
All right. Thank you very much for your passionate statement, but also your brevity. If you need more at the end, if you decide you want to add something, feel free. President Louis Schmidt, representing Unit 2, is next, or did you want a clicker?
Yes, please.
Do you have a PowerPoint presentation? Is someone ready to help with that? Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council, and all the public servants here and all the citizens here. My name is Louis Schmidt. I'm the proud president of ASME Local 2384, and we are the blue collar employees of the city of Phoenix. ASME is in public service. That's what we've done. That's what we do. That's what we continue to do. We've got a presentation here, so I'll walk the City Council through this and our members in the public through this.
Thank you.
In order to provide public service, and this is right here at our office, just earlier this year, as you can see, you have a police vehicle there and some fire vehicles there. It takes skills, teamwork, to maintain police and fire vehicles and equipment. As you can see, there's our helicopter mechanics, our fire mechanics, and our police helicopter mechanics. It's skilled labor that maintains these vehicles to make sure that when the officers are there at night, you know, wherever they're in need, that there's something, that they can rely on the safe transportation. When there's a mountain rescue, it's the firefighters don't have to worry about whether or not the equipment's going to work or not, because the skilled labor of Unit 2 makes sure that that equipment functions 24/7. In order for any calls to go out, it takes our dispatchers from Unit 3. Their quick action is what's needed in order for that firefighter, for the police officer to get the calls that they need. The quick response time requires immediate action from our dispatchers, and both in police and fire from Unit 3. It takes individuals from our community to become armed detention officers. Yes, armed detention officers. That is public safety, too, and that is under the, our Unit 3 ASME sisters and brothers under that local. As you can see, they're being sworn in. And I guarantee you, if you look at their uniform and you look at any of these officers here, there is no difference between a uniform, just a slight little patch that says detention officer. But these employees provide public safety to the community. They keep the community safe as well. They have guns and they put their lives at risk, too. But there are many more critical services that our communities depend on. That's provided by other talented, skilled individuals who have vested interest to perform and to be held accountable at high standards for the success of our city. They include the public employees from our water department. This is the Palo Verde Nuclear Power Plant. Many of you probably didn't even know that without the dedicated work of the employees in the wastewater treatment plants, if they didn't do their work correctly, the water would not get to the cooling towers to keep our reactors cool. But again, this is work that is done by our dedicated employees. That is public safety, very critical work as well. Thank you for shaking your head and agreeing, Councilwoman Williams. Here we go, our traffic signal technicians. Their critical work, they make sure that the traffic flows safely, that when the fire police vehicles are going through these intersections, that the traffic signals, you know, help them get through these safely. And it's dedicated employees like this that keep the community safe. Whether it's graffiti busters, whether it's the trash pickup from our members in Launa, you know, these trucks can't go out there unless our skilled mechanics, you know, get them fixed. We have a very competitive process with the trash collection, but it's because of the skilled labor that the employees provide that these vehicles serve our citizens every day, even on holidays. Water services. Yeah, it looks like he's having fun, but yeah, he's drenched in water. He's in a trench, you know, because again, we provide. Look at the storm damage that we recently had. Many people just chose to stay home, but our public employees still went out there, still serve the public, no matter what they do. Our employees continue to serve, and they provide clean and clear sewer services, no matter what the condition is. Safe drinking water. Over 400, 500 million gallons of water are produced every day by the city of Phoenix employees. Our employees ensure that when you drink it, when your family drinks out of these faucets, it's clean water that's coming out. Because of the dedicated work that they do, our lives, our children, everybody depends on this, the water that our city employees clean and produce every day. And this is from the recent storm damage. We saw the City Council, you know, the mayor and the City Council members talking about the, what the reaction from our fire police and our public employees, whether they were in parks or streets or water. Employees provided the quick service that the public needed. It was very hectic, the storm damage in different sections, even in South Phoenix, but our public employees continue to serve no matter what. And there was over, I think it was over 1,200 911 calls that went out just in a two-hour period. And the dedicated employees at the 911 dispatch and fire are the ones who took these calls. But in order to truly call Phoenix the best-run city in the world, we must follow the example of other cities that have compared, that we have compared ourselves to by following their lead by example and embrace our public employees, like our sister from Launa just said, that have given increases to their employees, Los Angeles, San Diego. I'm not going to read those, you know, you guys can see them on your own. But as you can see, Phoenix is the only city in the nation, the sixth-largest city in the nation, that is having this, I don't even know, I don't know what kind of problem you guys want to call it, but you guys are not prioritizing the service providers that the city has. And good old Detroit. We all keep hearing a couple of council members talk about how bad Detroit was. We just heard that just recently. But as you can see, Detroit, 5% increase and 2.5 increase each year until 2018. City of Phoenix provides crucial quality service, which the public has given 93% approval rating. So just get this, ladies and gentlemen, through all the tough times that we have been through, the citizens still get the service, the quality service from all the public employees, and there's still 93% approval rating. But massive employee cuts and concessions were imposed in order to, for the city of Phoenix to provide tax breaks and incentives for the Super Bowl. The Super Bowl got to come into Phoenix without paying any type of rental fees, and the city will tell you, well, they're bringing revenue in. But when we just give them free, the NFL is a multi-billion-dollar corporation, and for them to have access to our services, to our facilities, without paying a dime, that is, that's not right for transdev. You know, that's the foreign company that operates our bus systems. Some of the council members believe that outsourcing everything is great, but as you can see, when you outsource, these employees are going to strike. They're going to strike. And the sad thing here is that for the next five years, these employees are, this corporation has guaranteed a 3% increase for their employees. So we find money for private contractors, but we don't find, we're not finding solutions for our public providers, public service providers. And the good old hotel at, you know, that 340 North Third Street, $28 million was lost, has been lost to date by this hotel. $28 million that will not go to help the service providers or keep our community centers open. And again, this item's on the agenda, and I think it's 20, I think it might be even 28 as well, 28 or 27 for today. And they've been able to give away $19 million earlier this year for the city of Mesa. It was called the loan forgivable, loan forgiven, it was a loan that was forgiven by the city council. And then, of course, is the city's priority to find the Phoenix Suns a new arena? Is that their priority for tax money? No. This is a multimillion-dollar corporation who should not be using taxpayer funds, taxpayer funds for their private, for private business. Mr. Dick Bowers, this is the Herberger Theater in Phoenix. Dick Bowers was the interim city manager for the city of Glendale. He was pulling over $200,000 a year there, and at the same time, he's the president of his own consulting firm, but yet he's the CEO for this firm, you know, I mean, for the Herberger Theater, and he's pulling over six figures. So how can he be in all places at once, and he's running a city facility, a taxpayer-operated facility? How can he do all this at once? You know, the city needs to be efficient, and when, how we outsource, and this is just another example of where we need to tighten our belt. We just saw the story in today's Arizona Republic with Stephen Batta, or Banta, I'm sorry, for my misspelling on that, Stephen Banta. That was, you know, the taxpayers' money that was not accounted for, you know. Again, this is by taxpayers' money. He just got a $25,000 bonus from taxpayers' money, and yet we have council members who attack the employees and the public service providers because they feel that, you know, a COLA is too much to ask for. That is just not right. Again, we need more accountability on contracts. That's what they are paid for, by taxpayer funds, so we don't have to balance the budget on the backs of these employees, again, year after year. Enough is enough. This has to stop. The sixth-largest city in the nation struggles to become a competitive employer. More critical service, as the saga continues. Where do we begin? 2010, the labor groups, we all took a 3.2 wage cut and concessions to balance the budget because there was a $277 million shortfall. Labor groups were forced to give up 3.2 wage and concessions to balance the budget. Whoop, that's a repeat, sorry. To date, we have the smallest government in over 40 years. We continue to do more with less. As you know, the last city manager, Cavasal, got a $75,000 pay raise while everybody was taking concessions without public comment, and he leaves city in debt and retires. Promises kept, promises, promises made, promises kept, sorry for that. The council, as we know, we gave up these concessions, and they were supposed to come back, they never came back. We've been told to buy Phoenix, you know, buy Phoenix is a program that's adopted where we encourage the employees to buy Phoenix, spend in Phoenix to help the revenue, but for what? You know, we keep doing this, but it's, you know, we need our leadership to step up and help us out, you know. They're not doing their due justice. We saw the water bill in 2010. The finances are strong, but then once again, we keep coming to negotiations. We see this in the newsletters and our mailers and our water bills, saying how strong the city is. And then it comes time to, for negotiations, and once again, we have a budget shortfall. This is a broken record that keeps repeating itself, that every city, every public servant is tired of. We keep having good years and we're not in negotiations, and then, and at the start of negotiations, we find a deficit that just comes out of, we get the sky's falling mentality. As you saw last time, we were at impasse. We all had, we all came to the city council because there was no agreements. This was the first time that this has happened in the city of Phoenix. Unpaid holidays. These are the unpaid holidays that public servants are not being paid for. And the sad thing is, is that even Veterans Day, because of the furloughs and the unpaid days that they're taking, the city brags about, oh, we want to hire more veterans, but how disrespectful is this, you know, for our veterans who come to the city and have to take, you know, unpaid holidays? Total furlough hours between both units 2 and 3? 782,000 hours of unpaid furlough hours that have been taken by these employees. You probably can't see this. If you can increase this a little bit more, this is an employee's paycheck for two weeks total, and if you look at it, it was just last week. It's for 490-something dollars for two weeks for a brand-new-city employee. Yeah. Yeah, you shake your head, young lady, and that's true. Brand-new-city employee, this is what his take-home pay is. How can we survive on that? This is below the poverty rate. Again, like Jennifer said, there has been, the Consumer Price Index has been, you know, that the city gets all the time to their budgets. It does show that there's an increase of cost. There is an increase of cost every year. It does not cost any less to provide for our families, to pay for our bills, to pay, to live in Phoenix. It does not cost any less. The Consumer Price Index continues to climb. It has not flatlined. And again, employees have taken cuts, you know, but yet the city keeps getting the 93% approval rating. Other municipalities are giving their, in the valley are giving their employees raises. The city of Glendale, who we keep seeing is in a bad financial situation, gave their employees the week of Christmas off last week, last year, I'm sorry, paid last year. So even Glendale, who everybody looks at as having a bad economy or bad deficits, is taking care of the employees. Buckeye, 14%. Goodyear, 2.5. But like our sister from Launa said, we need safe working conditions. And what we've had, because we've had so much employees have been cut from the city, we have employees who've been transported to the hospital because there's no relief, there's no relief on some of these water crews at night. They've been working 14, 15, 16 hours in the middle of July, August, September, and who've been transported by our brothers from fire to the hospital. We had an employee from Streets get hit in Abotuki. We had one from other graffiti busters in North Phoenix get hit. This needs to stop. We need safe working conditions. We need safe working conditions. We need adequate staffing levels. We can't cut our way to a solution, which is what some of the council members think. They think, cut, 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 but that is not the solution. All the cutting only hurts the, our citizens, because that's less service that gets provided to them. Concessions must end. You know, the citizens just approve the transportation tax for on Prop 104 because they do value public services. What we need is the council to be transparent and not fear-mongering. This is an example of a librarian who did to make $102,000 a year and to retire. To me, there's no librarian in the city of Phoenix that's this young who can retire. I think the council may have been mixed up, because they're the only ones who have to work one term to get a pension, while these dedicated city employees have to work, you know, to the rule of 87 now. 93%, we keep hearing about 93%, but you know what? The 93% is also an ironic number, because that is, that is, when we polled the city employees, 93% have a distrust of our leadership and, you know, from the council, and we need better, we need better from you guys. The citizens are satisfied with the service, but you must take care of your service providers. And so what I will do is I will just wrap it up with this quick little speech, Mayor. Thank you for your patience. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for this opportunity to speak. In the past year, I have come here with props. I have come here dressed up in costumes. I have come here to argue, plead, debate, and ask for the treatment of our employees by this council. And understand, when I say, when I say "our employees," I am speaking about city employees in all unions and associations, both dues-paying and non-paying members. Today, I am back again, however, this time is to discuss where we have been driven to. For the past six years, as demonstrated by my presentation, the unions have been more than willing to assist in tough times. At first, it was willingly, as we truly believe the political speak of being a family. However, when we saw that this board had not, you know, had no problem lying to the Phoenix employees, our willingness turned to frustration and then to anger. The city went from financially strong to suddenly a $39 million shortfall, coincidentally prior to the 2014 negotiation. Of course, they supported pay raises for the city manager during that time, but public opinion already judged how great that was. So now, as we approach the 2016 negotiation session, we already know where we're headed. We will continue the charade that the city is bargaining in good faith. We will also be sure to put our best foot forward as well. And we will both plan to be here again in May and June, debating why city employees are not worthy of praise of council members. And when we inform you about low morale, what do we get in return? Morale is self-generated. At this point, it is about morale of city employees. For what we have been dealing with in the past six years, if you are unable to see the low morale of our employees, then you are either blind or happily lying to yourselves. When an employee cannot afford to feed their family, keep it over his or her head, make sure their kids have clothes because the pay keeps getting reduced by the employer, how do you expect that employee to have high morale? You expect employees to have high morale when they are forced to work two jobs? And why do you have to work these two jobs? Because some politician who gets to work 10 months out of the year decided that employees are overpaid, are receiving too many benefits, are abusing taxpayer money? Really? Go to South Phoenix, go to Maryville, go to these service centers, and you show me where we're hiding the money. Show me the BMWs, the Mercedes, and the Land Rovers. You're not going to see them. As we move forward, I have come to realize that this council truly believes in this sansu art of war, art of war, divide and conquer. The belief of the members of this council, to paraphrase George Orwell, is that all employees are accreted equally, but some are more equal than others. With all due respect to our brothers in PD and Fire, the members of this council seem to believe that some employees are better by virtue of their jobs. So let me cut to the chase. The council speaks about the need to have extra police officers. You can have 5,000, 10,000. You can even have one officer for every city of Phoenix employee, I mean, every city of Phoenix citizen. But those officers are not doing anything for the citizens without the Unit 1, Unit 2, Unit 3 employees, the 911 operator, the streets operator who keeps the streets safe, everybody, without the tower climber from Unit 2 who makes sure that the communication systems are operating functionally 24/7. It's a combined effort to keep the city running, just as it does with our skilled mechanics who make sure that these vehicles can respond. I point out this, I pointed out the customer satisfaction survey indicated 93% satisfaction rate with the city services. While the mayor and council, city manager are all patting themselves on the back, let me point out some interesting items about 93%. For some employees, 93% may result in a not met PMG, or in some cases, termination. 93%, 93% also represents the percentage of city employees, both dues-paying and non-paying, that believe that the mayor and city council manager are not trustworthy. The reason for this is that the council has, for the last six years, chosen to be politicians first, as opposed to being stewards of the citizens of Phoenix. What's the difference, you ask? A politician kisses, you know, kisses babies, and if someone who, I'm sorry, a politician is someone who kisses babies for votes while trying to think of ways to steal the baby's candy. A steward is someone who realizes what they have to do that is best for the, in order to generate revenue and improve the way of life for all citizens, even the risk of making unpopular decisions. Politicians are people who run to the unions promising the moon and the sun for an endorsement, but suddenly forget that support when it's negotiation time. If a man tells you he loves America, yet he hates labor, he is a liar. If a man tells you he trusts America, yet fears labor, he is a fool. Abraham Lincoln said that. Before I conclude, let me tell you a little joke that explains this board's actions. You have a unionized city of Phoenix employee, a member of Public Safety Union, and a city council member sitting at the table. In the middle of the table, there's a plate full of a dozen cookies. The council member reaches across the table, grabs 11 of the cookies, looks at the public safety member and says, "Look out for that union guy. He wants a piece of your cookie." In closing, regarding this next negotiation session, they may be blunt. It has often been said that the most dangerous people are those who have nothing to lose. Mayor, members of the city council, the employees of the city of Phoenix have nothing more to lose, and to the public, we will never abandon you. We will have never given up on you, and we will still be able to provide service, no matter what this council does. Thank you.
I thank you very much, President Schmidt. We had asked, and I believe that each of the representative labor groups had agreed to keep it to 10 minutes. Obviously, that was significantly longer than 10 minutes, but it's up to you whether you want to follow that or not. That was what our request was, and again, I thought that was agreed upon, but if you want to go longer, I certainly won't cut you off. This is an important time in our biannual labor agreements. Ms. Deborah Novak Scott is next, representing Unit 3. Good to see you.
Good afternoon. My name is Deborah Novak Scott. I'm the vice president of ASME Local 2960, representing Unit 3 employees. I thought it was working. Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Deborah Novak Scott, vice president of ASME Local 2960, representing Unit 3 employees in the city of Phoenix. As Louise had shown in the PowerPoint presentation, yes, we do have quite a few Unit 3 employees in public safety. We have Unit 3 employees in almost every department in this city, so the chances of a citizen coming into some kind of contact with a Unit 3 employee when they're getting their needs met is probably going to be close to 100%. Unit 3 employees are now in their sixth year of concessions. To help the city out during the deficit, as was shown in the PowerPoint presentation of $277 million in 2010, and to save positions to serve the public, we agreed to concessions. Those concessions never ended. In 2010 to '12 MOU, we gave up 3.2% of our total wage package. What that equated to for each Unit 3 employee was they took 48 hours or six days each of furlough, each year of the contract. So at the end of the 2010, 2012 MOU, they had taken 96 hours unpaid leave or 12 days off without pay. They also endured a 1% wage reduction. Deferred compensation from the city was suspended. Vacation buyback was suspended. The comp time conversion, which is their overtime they earn, and instead of being paid for it, they put it in a comp time bank to use later as leave, that was suspended. The 12-hour rule for overtime was suspended, so if they came in within 12 hours of their previous shift, they didn't get, they didn't get additional overtime. They had to work over the 40 hours in a week to qualify. Linguistic pay, which actually saves the money, the city money versus going to a third party, was reduced by 50%. 2012 to 2014 MOU, we sat down with the city. The language in our 2010, 2012 MOU said that all concessions would be restored. We even went to purb over this. Previous city managers said, oh, it was a misunderstanding. City only restored half the concessions, or 1.6% that contract. That meant the Unit 3 employees received back seven tenths of the 1% wage decrease they took. Furloughs were reduced from 48 hours to 24 hours or three days each year, but they still, at the end of that contract, took 48 hours furlough or six full shifts off without pay. Their vacation buyback was restored from twice a year to only one time a year, but the other benefits continued to be suspended from 2010. This last contract, 2014 to 2016, the city wanted to continue the 2012 to 14 concessions, and they wanted more. Now, Unit 3 employees are doing more furloughs. Last year, we did 48 hours or six days. This year, we're doing 48 hours. We're taking additional wage decreases of 1.3% over the term of the contract. 0.65 last year, 0.65 this year. Vacation buybacks completely been suspended again, and none of the other suspended benefits were ever restored. In summer, Unit 3 employees have sustained a 1.6% decrease in wages across the board since 2010. They've had 248 hours or 31 full days of furlough since 2010. In money terms, 48 hours of furlough a year is a 2.3% wage decrease. decrease. With the additional holiday furlough this year, they're now having two-point-seven percent decrease in pay, based on working two-thousand-and-eighty hours in a year. The cost of living, the Consumer Price Index, as Louise and Jennifer pointed out, have increased since 2010. So our employees are making less money than they did six years ago, and their purchasing power is down. Currently, Tier Two employees pay fifteen-point-five percent or more towards their pension. In January, Tier Two and the new Tier Three employees will pay eleven percent of their pay toward their pension, comparable to what the county and state require. These employees, though, also have to live with these concessions. This causes a problem for the city to attract and retain new personnel. Other employers are not dealing with these concessions. The city of Phoenix is. Employees have left the city. They've told us that they plan to leave the city because they cannot survive. You saw a paycheck that Louise showed in the PowerPoint. They cannot survive paying eleven percent pension and doing all these concessions. Their net pay isn't enough to survive on. Unit Three lost over two-hundred positions between July 2012 and October 2015. That means not only are these people getting paid less, these employees are doing more work with less staff to service the public at the same level they were in 2010. We ask the concessions be restored. We're also asking the Unit Three employees receive a wage increase. Thank you.
I thank you very much, Ms. Novak Scott. Thanks for all the representative of our labor organizations for being here and the excellent testimony. The next two units will be Phoenix Law Enforcement Association and United Phoenix Firefighters. I'm not sure if there was agreement. Who goes first?
We're going together.
You're together. Okay, so you got a total of twenty minutes between PJ Dean, representing United Phoenix Firefighters, and Will Buvadas, representing Phoenix Law Enforcement Association. I'll let you handle how you split the, how you split the time. Good to see you.
Which does which, do we have?
I don't know. I think that goes forward. I know that one of them.
Oh, they did it. The one on the right. There you go.
Mayor Stanton, members of the council. My name is PJ Dean, and I'm a fire captain with the city of Phoenix. I'm also the communications director for the United Phoenix Firefighters Association, Local 493. Presenting jointly with me today is Phoenix Police Officer Will Buvadas, who is also the treasurer and chief contract negotiator for the Phoenix Law Enforcement Association. Officer Buvadas and I would like to thank the mayor and the council for the opportunity to speak before you today regarding this very important topic. We stand before you and united in representation of the nearly four-thousand-five-hundred sworn police officers and firefighters who are your first responders in Phoenix. To begin, we're happy to say that there is recently a lot of good news concerning our city. The past several years have presented numerous seemingly insurmountable challenges to Phoenix. The issues of a historical recession, major leadership changes, a slash general fund, and mass exodus of employees are just to name a few. Any one of these issues alone could have proven catastrophic to a city like Phoenix, yet we seem to have all of them at once. These were some of the toughest times in our history, but rather than focus on the negative aspects of the challenges we faced, it's important to recognize what we did to overcome them. Your first responders did what we always do in emergencies, create an action to overcome a problem. We, along with the other employees of the city, dug deep. We made personal sacrifices, worked harder, longer, and more creatively so that we could continually serve the public effectively despite less money and resources to work with. Operating budgets, staffing levels, paychecks, all declined, but our customer service and our standing within the community did not. As a result of this can-do attitude by the employees and the collective efforts of our city, Phoenix, like its mythical namesake, arose triumphantly from the ashes of the Great Recession, a better and stronger city who had proven by its actions that together we can accomplish anything. As we emerge from the darkness of the past, we are met with many great things, such as increased revenues, positive economic indicators for our city and state, along with a return to the practice of hiring personnel lost through attrition. And with these headlines, you'll see just a few examples of that. Where Arizona was recently ranked number one in the nation for job growth by Forbes Magazine, unbelievable positive news that inevitably will have an effect on Phoenix. Phoenix in itself has had good financial news. Just last summer, reported higher revenues, lower expenditures, and actually showed a twenty-five-million-dollar surplus.
Yes, everybody, I'm Will Buvadas from the Phoenix Law Enforcement Association. I have the proud honor of representing these men and women of the Phoenix Police Department. Also behind us, you know, is Shawn Matson, the president of PPSLA, the Sergeant's and Lieutenant Group. Since they are a meet-and-discuss group, they are unable to present with us today. He wanted to come to show that he is also united with us on this message. Let me continue. This is all great news, but there's still more work to be done. As you know, first responders in Phoenix have endured six years' worth of pay cuts and furloughs over the past three contracts, as Phoenix emerges from one of the most profound fiscal crises in recent memory. As proud stakeholders of Phoenix, it was our honor and obligation to share in the sacrifices that were necessary to overcome the monetary challenges that the city faced. The financial health of the city of Phoenix has corrected, but regrettably, the sacrifices that these brave men and women have made have not been corrected. By its own projections, Phoenix is posed to experience year-over-year revenue growth through 2020. The concept of the city that is making more yet paying its employees less gives us great concern that Phoenix would rapidly lose competitive ground in the job market when compared to surrounding cities who have also experiencing similar, if not identical, financial challenges. It is beginning to appear that cuts to employee pay packages now represent the path of least resistance when attempting to facilitate a balanced budget. These kinds of practices are perfectly understandable in times of fiscal crisis, but confounding, but confounding in our current state of affairs. As elected officials, you guys, the mayor and council, represent the will of the people to make decisions that will enable Phoenix to benefit as a whole. Every person on this council is our trusted safety net of discretion for what is right. We come to you today not only to illustrate the primary and secondary consequences of continued pay cuts to first responders, but also to ask for your support in helping us obtain a fair contract for the public safety employees of Phoenix. Facts, first responders have withstood six years of pay cuts, furloughs, benefit reductions, and increase to employee costs. The amount of the employee concessions since 2010 are at four-point-one percent of total pay. Unfortunately, these concessions go way beyond, or well beyond, what is contained in the contracts. When you take into account the concessions coupled with the increase to pension obligations and the increases to inflation, the total amount of reduction to our public safety's purchasing power is closer to eighteen percent. It's actually right at seventeen-point-eight-six percent. That is an almost eighteen percent loss in revenue that would take, that we would take home and support our families. This also does not include increases that we have borne out of our pockets to healthcare and other costs that have occurred along the last six years. These pay cuts represent real money for real families and has created a real sacrifice for these hard-working men and women of public safety.
And we're here to ask you for support for black and brown people who are being murdered by the Phoenix Police Department. Raise detention, deportation. We're done. We need your leadership. Phoenix Police Department needs to come here and answer both questions.
Ma'am, thank you very much. We'll have an opportunity for citizen comment at the end of the hour.
No answers, no justice, nothing. We demand answers. AFC students, please offer.
Thank you very much.
Without reason, a remade prisoner was killed. We demand answers.
You will have an opportunity to testify at the end of the meeting as partisan request.
Your silent face unit accomplice.
Mayor?
Justice for a man!
Mayor?
Justice for a man!
There's nothing to take these individuals. These people are libelous. They're anti-police, and they're, as far as I'm concerned, it's unacceptable, these type of behavior, that these individuals are.
I thank you very much, council.
There's nothing to thank these people.
No one!
And it's unacceptable that they are willing to drown out other people who are willing to speak.
Councilman, there.
No one! Mayor, they need to be ejected out of that room.
Councilman, I appreciate your advice.
They need to be ejected, Mayor. They are not allowed to disrupt other people who have a fundamental first amendment right to speak.
Councilman, thank you for your advice. Okay, now we proceed back to regular order, and we'll make sure that no time was taken away from our two leaders of Phoenix Law Enforcement and United Phoenix Firefighters. Please continue. I apologize for that interruption.
Thank you, Mayor. As I was saying, we have accepted these sacrifices because of the city's financial crisis, but make no mistake, these pay cuts, along with the increases to pension costs for our families and rise in inflation, along with rising healthcare costs, have created severe financial hardships in the houses of Phoenix police officers and Phoenix firefighters. Now, with the city's revenue recovered, with the city's economy growing again, we believe it is time for these sacrifices to end by having these pay cuts restored. If these cuts are continued, Phoenix will have a difficult time remaining competitor as the employer of choice with consecutive years of reduced pay as surrounding cities have started to give out raises over the past few years. Tempe, as you see on the slide, is just one example of a surrounding municipality who has consistently given out raises over the past few years. Tempe employees have received pay raises for the last three years. This means that the Tempe employee who did make financial sacrifices at the bottom of the recession, just like Phoenix employees did, have only had to have those concessions for half the time. They only had concessions for three years, and now are on three years of pay raises, while my men and women and the men and women of the fire department have now endured six years of pay cut. This is despite the fact that Tempe is experiencing the same financial challenges and the same increased public safety pension costs that Phoenix is. Another example is Dallas. Dallas is having a huge problem because they have lost, they're not competitive with pay or pension in the Dallas area. There's been a large departure of experienced firefighters and police officers who left Dallas to go to the smaller surrounding suburbs. This scenario has been replicated all over the nation due to lagging pay in the major cities. It is a truly unfortunate circumstance, but if these men and women are forced to make a choice between their employers and their families, can you really blame the first responders of Dallas for choosing their families? Dallas Firefighters Association Vice President Stephen Klempner says it best. "We will take pride in being public servants and helping the public, but when it's all said and done, you still have to feed the kids and pay the mortgage." With a continued disparity in pay between Phoenix and its surrounding cities, it will only be a matter of time before this kind of problem manifests itself here. And public safety, first responders' experience, is an absolute invaluable trait. First responders for five, six, seven years of service represent one of our most crucial demographics for service delivery. These personnel carry perhaps the most water for our respective organizations, and to lose those seasoned and fully-trained responders to other cities would create a void that would be difficult for both departments to fill. In our experience with public safety in Phoenix, we have seen morale levels at extreme highs and extreme lows. We know, we know and can appreciate the differences between the two. Low morale will quickly add toxicity to any organization, hamper its effectiveness, and present safety issues. Fortunately, the fire and police departments have the ability to be resilient towards low morale, but that only lasts for so long. Historic levels of high morale are what propel our agencies into world-class organizations they are today. High levels of morale are a requirement to maintain and build upon our accomplishments to serve the city, the citizens of Phoenix in the future.
It has been said that pride is the fuel of human accomplishment, and when employees feel valued, the organizations they work for fire on all cylinders. The forthcoming round of contract negotiations will give the city an opportunity to not only express to its employees the level at which they are valued, but also demonstrate to our community that we are indeed a city that is well-managed. A fair contract will benefit everyone in this room and the city of Phoenix as a whole. Your first responders in Phoenix do so much more than just arrest criminals and put out fires. We protect our city with world-class, comprehensive emergency services for any situation that may arise. Year for year, the Phoenix area has expanded in size, and the frequency and intensity of emergencies have escalated. In the face of increased workloads, staffing shortages, budget reductions, first responders have been able to maintain or improve service delivery despite earning less for the past six years. We fully acknowledge the challenges pension employer contributions present to the financial picture of Phoenix. Your first responders have been committed to do our part to help the funding of our pensions with reductions in benefits, increased employee contributions, and creating a self-imposed, comprehensive pension reform plan for the public safety retirement system. If implemented, this reform will bring the PSPRS funding level up to seventy-five percent in fourteen years. I want to repeat that, seventy-five percent in fourteen years. In the course of that time, this would greatly reduce the amount of employer contributions that Phoenix is required to make to our pensions. Sadly, this reform plan has met more obstacles than it should have, and it remains in limbo at the state legislature. Rather than sit by idly and observe, first responders have done our fair share to proactively and effectively address the issues within our pension system. To put it bluntly, we cannot be expected to be continually penalized with reductions in pay for pension issues that are outside of our control, especially as surrounding cities who make the same pension contributions as Phoenix consistently give their employees more. We are proud to say that we have done our part and then some in the course of our shared sacrifice to support Phoenix during its darkest financial days. We have never turned our back on Phoenix. We've either supported or opposed propositions for the benefit of Phoenix and have consistently done more with less as we serve our city. Campaign signs and social media posts frequently mention endorsements by or support of first responders, but now comes what we would consider to be the greatest and most genuine show of support for your first responders. In closing, the time has come for city leadership to protect its protectors from any further reductions in pay. Should Phoenix decide to continue its continued trend of pay cuts and furloughs to its first responders, this would signify where an approach usually reserved for financial crises now becomes standard practice. We are hopeful that our presentation has clearly identified the issues and pitfalls associated with continuing the dangerous act of balancing the city's budget on the backs of its employees. It is our most sincere and humble request that the leadership of Phoenix choose the 2016-17 memorandum of understandings as an opportunity to do what's right for its first responders. A fair contract would keep Phoenix on the map of excellence as a world-class city in which to work and live in. On behalf of the four-thousand-five-hundred first responders of Phoenix, we would like to thank Mayor Stanton and the council for the opportunity to share with you a few of our thoughts and concerns. We are hopeful that this round of contract negotiations leads to a fair and equitable agreement for all parties involved. This would conclude our presentation. We again thank you for your time, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you very much for your presentation.